Stillwater Planning Commission meeting of July 11th is called to order. The Chair will briefly explain the form, the forms, the format of this evening's meeting. We'll be in the process this evening to call for items on the agenda. The Commission shall hear briefly from staff first, an applicant and/or representative, then open the public hearing and hear from those in favor and/or those in opposition to the request. When you come to the podium, please clearly state your name and address for the record. Before closing the public hearing, both staff, applicant, and/or representative will be provided an opportunity to respond, to provide additional information, and answer questions. After all interested parties have spoken, the public hearing will be closed. We will hear closing remarks and alternatives from the staff. The first item on tonight's agenda is Short Term Rental STR 0108: Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Including Recommendation, Approval, or Denial of the Application for a Short Term Rental from Cody Calamar, excuse me for mispronunciation, for property addressed as 901 West Graham Avenue in a single-family, large-lot residential RSI district. Staff?
Thank you. Good evening, Commissioners. I'm Jackie Porter presenting on behalf of the Planning Department. This first item is an STR located at 901 West Graham Avenue. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is a corner lot property located on Graham and Washington. So, under ordinance 3435, STRs are to be licensed with the city if located within an RSL, RSS, or RT zoning district. As part of the licensing process, property owners within 300 feet of the subject property are notified of the STR application and have 30 days within which to file an appeal to license. At this time, appeals have been filed for the STR application request for 901 West Graham Avenue. The property is Zoned RSL zoning district. The Planning Commission is a hearing body for the STRs. The hearing will be held as a specific use hearing exception. There is no staff report or presentation. The criteria by Planning Commission is to review the STR application is based on the SUP section of the code. The applicant for the STR has a burden for this case. In this case, they did, I forwarded you his email that he sent me last night. I forwarded that to you this morning. If you have any questions or would prefer me to read it to you, I can. I did bring it down here. Please note that if there's any questions of private restrictions or covenants arise, the city cannot enforce private restrictions and covenants, but the Planning Commission can give weight to them as part of the deliberative process.
Any questions for staff?
Did you need this email at all?
I'm sorry, what?
Did you all need this email at all?
Yes.
You got it? Okay, perfect.
Did you see the email?
Yes.
Both of them? Okay. The applicant typically can speak at this point, but as I read the email that we forwarded this morning, he's not available. So, like to open it up to anyone who'd like to speak in opposition to this request. Staff doesn't need to come back to the podium for STRs or?
You can request anyone that wants to speak in favor of the item can come forward as well now.
Okay. Anyone to speak in favor of this proposal by the applicant can come forward and speak at the podium?
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'm Jeff Black, 3724 Timberline Drive. I own the house adjacent to where they're applying for this short-term rental. And I have mixed emotions. You know, it's a nice neighborhood, and the only concern I have with it is the parties. If they're going to have parties there and it's going to be, you know, how do they control that? Other than that, I would be for them doing that, but that would be my one concern, is how do they control that? I don't know how that works, or if there is even a process for that.
I think for the most part, on Airbnb or VRBO, there are policies that say no parties are allowed.
Gotcha.
Maximum amount of occupants for the rental, but as far as enforcing it goes, most of the times I would say that the owner is probably not...
Responsible.
I mean, I don't know about responsibility, but they're not going to be there.
Sure.
I don't know where this owner specifically lives, do we?
Right.
He is still water-based, so he may be able to stop by, but as far as enforcement goes, I would say it's basically neighbors calling on them for that, but for the most part, it's just a written policy within the apps that tell them no.
Well, understanding that, I would be in favor of it.
Okay.
And I do, like I said, I do own the property just adjacent to it, and I think it'd be a great location for that, close to OSU baseball, close to OSU games. And it's kind of a mixed neighborhood now with rentals, long-term rentals, some homeowners, and it's a nice neighborhood, and I just wouldn't want to mess that up.
Yeah, there is a bit of a hedge with the way that the STR process works in that it comes up for renewal periodically, so if there's an issue with a property, complaints can be filed, and that can be considered when they come up for renewal.
Okay. That's good to know. Okay. Thank you for your time.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Did you want to, the legal, maybe briefly explain what the protest process is, that you can engage with the city?
He just spoke to that. You can file a complaint with the city, you can bring it to the city clerk's office, and then when it comes up for renewal, we can consider it, and/or we can bring it to the Planning Commission to hear the issues and revoke the license as well.
Okay. So, there is actually a formal recourse, formal process, yes?
And of course, any violation of city ordinance, whether it's a tenant or the owner, can be reported to the police department to investigate, and that would be a record as well.
Okay. Thank you.
There's no staff alternatives?
There is. Can you close the public hearing, please?
Oh, I'm going to close the public hearing.
All right. So, your alternatives is approve the application, defer for additional discussion, or deny the application.
Any further questions of staff? No? Okay. Thank you. Any discussion among the Commissioners regarding this request?
Well, I think the applicant did address, or attempt to address, the concern raised by the person that appealed regarding parking, so I don't know what else there is to discuss on that, so...
Okay. All right. Thank you. Now, do we need to call for a motion?
A motion to approve the STR.
I would second that.
Okay. Now, we take the vote? Yes.
Mr. Preather?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay. The next item on the agenda is another short-term rental, STR 0109: Consideration, Discussion, and Possible Action Including Recommendation, Approval, or Denial of an Application for a Short Term Rental from Charles Jones for property addressed as 705 North Dryden Circle in a single-family, small-lot residential RSS district. Staff?
All right. Thank you. As stated, this is another STR with the location at 705 North Dryden Circle. Here's an area map of the subject property. It is on the curve of Dryden Circle, near Miguel Roy and Perkins. As stated previously, this property is Zoned RSS, and it is required by ordinance 3435 to let property owners know, and they have 30 days to appeal. We have received appeals for this property. As previously stated, please note that if there's any questions of private restrictions, covenants arise, the city cannot enforce private restrictions and covenants, but the Planning Commission can give weight to them as part of the deliberation process.
Any questions of staff? Okay. We'll open the public hearing now. Do we have anyone who'd like to speak in favor of this request?
Good evening, folks. Thanks. My name's Charles Johnson. I'm at 705 North Dryden Circle. I'm the owner of the property. I've moved from Oregon to Oklahoma to oversee this property and make sure that it is in top-notch space. I came specifically to Stillwater to create a space that is at the top end of the Airbnb rental market. I specifically am aiming for folks that have more money than others, and so my price point is aimed for that. So, all concerns, if I read the letter correctly, are not actually addressed towards my property, but are addressed towards the zoning issues in the area and those concerns. So, at this point, I'm not really sure what I can address because there aren't concerns about my specific property. There's concerns about zoning, which I am not the person who created the zoning. So, I'd be more than happy to address any concerns that anybody may have objection to this property after I hear them. Thank you.
All right. Thank you. Anyone else like to speak in favor of this proposal? Would anyone like to speak in opposition to this proposal? Approach the podium, please.
Actually, I'm quite surprised I'm the only one here tonight on this issue because I've talked with many neighbors.
Can you bring the microphone closer to your mouth and give us your name and address, please, ma'am?
Yes. My name is Cheryl May, and my address is 924 North Benjamin Street.
Thank you.
Yes, ma'am? Okay. I don't have the map that you had up while ago where it is on the corner, rather, where it curves on Dryden.
She's going to bring it up for you.
Okay. Oh, thank you. Appreciate that. All right. My property line is actually, my backyard backs up basically to the corner of where you see the property that they've marked. I don't know. I don't have a pointer to... Can you tell what I'm trying to say?
Do you share a property line with that, or you're...
Basically, it's a fence line. I have two properties that are right behind me. One of them, both of those are single-family homes owned. Mine is a single-family home owned, and so are pretty much everybody around me. It's not a real heavily rented area. I live on Benjamin, which is, I'm on that curve also, and I have the largest pie-shaped lot. There's a sidewalk that runs beside my house that connects Dryden with Benjamin.
Oh, okay.
Okay. The sidewalk's not on there, but...
Yeah.
Okay. How often does the renewal come up? When you mentioned that, I was curious.
It is annual.
It's annual? Okay. All right. I've got this written out because I don't normally do this, but I'd like to register my objection to turning a single-family, small-lot residential into a short-term rental in our area. When I purchased my home, literally like 23-plus years ago, I did so knowing that this particular area was a single-family residential area, not an area for residential short-term rental. While this might be attractive to the applicant of the above-mentioned property as an income generator, it is not what other surrounding property owners can consider beneficial or desirable. And that's why I stated when I first walked up here, I'm surprised I'm the only one here this evening. I really thought there would be more neighbors here. This is a quiet, peaceful neighborhood. I have wonderful neighbors in this neighborhood, and even the people living behind me are good neighbors. So, we know each other, and we are respectful of each other. These are our homes. Our families live here. Our seniors live here, and our hard-earned money was invested in a family community area and not a short-term rental vacation spot for turnkey partying, is how I see it. I'm concerned about people who come to town to have a good time and are not likely to care how they disturb the neighborhood. It's not their problem since they are not part of the neighborhood community and can leave it behind. I don't want to constantly be concerned about who or what is close to my personal home. I am concerned it will negatively change the character and transform the quality of life in our area. I'm also concerned about more traffic coming through that neighborhood area, and again, parking would also be an issue, but excessive noise, vandalism, theft, our personal safety, and even something as basic as they don't clean up after themselves when they leave, just trashing things. Short-term renters have no stake in the neighborhood and no reason to care how they lead the neighborhood or how it may suffer from their vacation activities. Another concern is how it will negatively impact our own property values. These are but a few of the reasons I do not want a short-term rental property nearby. Please, I ask you to put a stop to this request. It's not that I don't wish for this gentleman to be able to have a way of earning additional money off of his property. It's just not what this neighborhood was developed to be, and I don't think it would be appropriate for that to be approved. So, the other thing too, and I just, I took these pictures today. May I show these to you?
You can put it to her, and she can pass them down to them.
Okay. The one... This first one is behind my property area. Just an example, just looking from the alleyway behind the houses, I keep mine mowed at all times, and so do the neighbors behind me. I mean, you could drive a city truck through it and have no trouble. The other pictures you're going to look at, however, are exactly directly behind the property that we're looking at. And for it to be in this much of a disarray, it's kind of hard for me to believe that whoever owned this property was really going to be caring for it in a way that it belongs in the neighborhood. My understanding is with the city, too, we're supposed to keep the alleyways clear, are we not? You might be able to drive a motorcycle through there without hurting yourself, but not likely. So, I question how well will the city actually stand behind the care of this property and how it's going to fit and work within our neighborhood? I truly am very concerned. I'm not just trying to be a gripey neighbor, but I really hope that you guys will truly consider this. I wish that you would also go out and look at the property. There are huge trees in the middle of that alleyway directly behind it. You can't even see the house from back there, as you can see from those pictures that I took. So, that is my concern, and I thank you for your time and your attention on this. Thank you.
All right. Thank you for your comments. Does anyone else wish to speak in opposition to this proposal? Okay. Seen none, we'll close the public hearing. And have staff...
Hang on a second. Yeah, I was going to say, can we actually talk to the applicant?
That's fine.
Yeah. Because we now have the operation that I have not heard you do? Yeah.
Yes, you may approach the...
Can I see the photos?
Oh, you know where they are.
These are not my house or my property. Again, I would ask you, this is not about my property. This has nothing to do with me...
Can you speak up into the mic?
Sorry. This has nothing to do with my property. This evidence here is not my property. These are not photos of my property. The complainant has not mentioned my property of having any issues, or the issues that she's brought up are general issues, zoning issues. Parking on her street will not be affected by anything that happens on my street. Will parking be affected on your street? I'm not sure. I provide four parking spots. Okay. I have three bedrooms. That's more than zoning would ask. So, how many people do you tend to rent out? Six is the most you can have in my place. Okay. Now, have I had more than six? I'll be brutally honest with you. Homecoming weekend, grad weekend, something like that, people are coming up from Dallas. They're spending $1,700 a night to be at my house. Do you think they're throwing a rad party? No. They're catering in something in the middle of the day, meeting their friends and family, and then they're leaving. They're not spending, that many people are not spending the night, but they want to enjoy that house the way it is. It's designed to entertain folks, but it's not designed to entertain folks all night. I'm not, I don't, this argument is not about my property or me. She didn't mention one thing. My, I've gone to the police officer, gone to the police chief. There's nothing that's happened in the year that I've owned that property. There's been no calls to that property. That property's providing a lot of income for a lot of people in this town. I invested over $50,000 into that property, and now it's assessed $20,000 higher than it was when I bought it. We want to talk about property values? Property values are going up because I moved in. My neighbors, physical neighbors, I know them all by name. I have their phone numbers. They have my phone number. I'm in this town. I can respond to anything within 10 minutes. I'm here to help this community. I want this community to be better. This community has an opportunity to be better if you continue to provide these opportunities for business people. Thank you for your time.
Now, we'll close the public hearing. Staff want to present the alternative?
So, your alternatives are approve the application, defer for additional discussion, deny the application.
Any questions for staff? Any comments by the Commissioners?
I would ask, are we allowed to talk directly to the applicant or to the...
It's not advised to go back-and-forth Q&amp;A session, but if you so wish to address something, that's your choice.
Okay. I guess I would then. I'd like to say that, you know, the comments from Ms. May are common when we have short-term rentals, and I certainly wouldn't say that they're without merit because it's just hard to know. I think, you know, going through this for a year now, listening to applicants, and also being involved in both sides of short-term rentals personally, a lot of what could go wrong typically doesn't happen, but a lot of it is on the property owner to make sure that, and so there's a lot that they have to bear. And so, places like Airbnb or VRBO have a rating system, and both the renter and the property owner rate each other, so it's really important for them to act well so that he gives them a rating so that they can rent somewhere else. Doesn't solve all problems. I'm not going to claim that, but I do think they can go either way, and sometimes there's benefits because if you get a long-term renter or a really poor neighbor, it's really hard to deal with that as well. They're there for longer, so the city has put in provisions like the renewal or the complaint process so that if there is an owner that doesn't deal with issues like they should, and it can be dealt with, but you know, if you own property, that comes with a lot of rights, so it's hard for us as a Planning Commission to not allow these to go through when they are allowed without really specific concern. So, I just want you to know that you've been heard. It's just really a challenge for us to not allow these things to get approved, just because the ordinances and the processes and so forth being what they are, so I guess that's what I would say.
Commissioner Williams, do you have any comments?
I have nothing.
I have a couple of comments. One, I spoke to a person who is an owner-occupant of the neighborhood, and they said that, of course, they didn't grab hard data, but the mix in the neighborhood that they're aware of is 60% owner-occupant, 40% rental. I know based on my experience living in Stillwater, the initial house that we bought in the neighborhood was primarily owner-occupied housing. By the time moved out, over 10 years later, the occupants at that time had aged out, sold, and it was because of the location and relatively proximity to the campus, most of the housing was rental. So, there's the original intent of owner-occupied, but as a city evolves, that changes. The other comment that I had from the person I spoke to in the neighborhood said that Dryden Circle, and Dryden was a very busy street. She didn't understand why, but there is already, for that neighborhood, relatively heavy traffic. And to further comment on Commissioner Preather's comments is oftentimes we do see protests about an STR, and they're oftentimes worst-case scenarios. We're not saying, or I'm not saying, that those are not risks that we should be cognizant of and listen to complaints about, but typically, they don't come to fruition.
I think one of the other benefits of it is that it's in the owner's best interest to keep up with the property to the best of their ability and make sure that it's always looking nice, especially with the higher clientele, which again, is just going to benefit the neighborhood and all the home values as well.
Absolutely. They need to consider their property values also, so...
Any other comments?
Well, I would just say that these are the most challenging things that I personally deal with on the Commission, so, because there's just very differing views on the outcomes, the potential outcomes, so... I don't know that that matters a lot, but just...
Well, yes, it does. Okay. Do I hear a motion?
Motion to approve the STR.
I'd second that.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Preather?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Motion passes.
Okay, the next item of the agenda is consideration of the meeting summary and minutes of June 27, 2023. Did you find any corrections that are necessary to be made? Okay, seen none, do I hear a motion to approve the minutes?
I'd make a motion to approve the minutes as presented.
Second.
Mr. Shanahan?
Yes.
Mr. Preather?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
Okay, now, the last item on the agenda is miscellaneous items from staff, planning commissioners, or city attorney for discussion and possible action. Are there any?
No announcements from the city attorney's office, just the next meeting schedule.
Well, I have a comment. I would, what I was going to suggest or propose, if that's even what I'm doing, I think that STRs, they are difficult. I brought up at a commission meeting a year ago-ish that STRs have become a problem in the Mountain West, in tourist cities, or cities that, medium-sized cities that live, are located near national parks or other resort areas, and oftentimes, STRs are bought up by people with money and then drive occupants out who work in the service industry, public administration, public service. So it's become a real issue. I think it's also an issue in college towns, where we have a paucity of housing stock anyway. So I'm wondering if it'd be worthwhile for the commission to have a discussion sometime about that? We need to look at changes in the current policy, or is it adequate? Or really, is it anything that this commission or the city council can even address adequately? And if we have a meeting and discuss this, would we then want to coordinate with the city council and discuss with them? Because I'm not aware that there was a overall strategy discussion about STRs, and I may be very wrong about that, but just wonder what these two commissioners think about that, or if it's even worthwhile.
Second.
I can, I'm going to butt in here a little bit. We are currently looking at various cities in Oklahoma in their processes of STRs. We are in the works of that, and then seeing what we can do in comparison with them, this is something that staff is working on actively at this moment. So I believe back, what, October, maybe, we brought STRs to you all. City council decided to kick it back, so we are going to work that in and do another text amendment once that comes through. You all will see everything. And if you have any suggestions of cities that you would like me to research, because I already have a list of like Guthrie, Enid, Broken Arrow, and Broken Bow, or a couple of them off the top of my head that I'm researching.
What about other college towns that are similar to ours, like Manhattan, Kansas? I know Kansas State, their college town is very similar to Stillwater.
I can add it to my list, because we currently just did Oklahoma, but we can, because we're at the point that, because I had the discussion with the firm that we're going to hire for our comp plan, and there are now states that are passing where we, they can't do any regulations on STRs. So currently, we're the only state that I know of in the Midwest that hasn't done that. So there's that, too.
The regulation that the states considering or passing, are, they don't allow municipalities to put restrictions?
Yeah, they make them consider them as just regular rentals.
Okay, interesting.
Yeah.
Could you send the planning commission a list of those cities that you're looking at?
Yes, I can do that.
And in that, you might, again, reference what the potential timeframe for bringing this to us, what you said, October, but...
Oh, yeah, that's when we brought it back, back October 2022.
Oh, okay, is there, so there's not a timeframe?
There's not a timeline, but it is a push by several members of city council, so...
Okay, you might reference all that in the email where you sent us the cities. Okay, thank you very much.
You're welcome.
Okay, the next meeting of the planning commission is scheduled for July 18, back-to-back weeks. And do I hear a motion to adjourn?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.
Mr. Shanahan?
Uh, yes.
Mr. Preather?
Yes.
Mr. Williams?
Yes.
I would be disappointed if someone said no.
And shocked, probably.